So we'll begin. We're going to open up the planning board meeting for March 21, 2022, 6:30. We're going to open the public informational meeting for site plan for 481 Lancaster Street, map 443, parcel 2-2B, Craft Brewery and Tap House. Do I have a representative of the petitioner?
Yes, ma'am. Brother Chris and Andrew Hanigan Engineering, we're going to have Tap House Holdings for the construction of Craft Brewery and Tap House at 481 Lancaster Street. Just to orientate ourselves here, we have Lancaster Street that was on the top of the page, you have the 435 Lancaster Street property that has the 435 grill, and you have the intersection of Viscloidy just off the page right here. Currently, the property is undeveloped. Historically, the property did contain a myriad of various manufacturing and warehouse facilities, which at this point in time had been demolished, and the site has kind of renaturalized itself, for lack of a better term. Portions of the property comprise primarily a brush grass mixture with some additional parking areas that were utilized by the 435 property. But it's the intent of the application to construct an 8,700 square foot, approximately square foot building that will be utilized as a craft brewery and a tap house. The building was constructed in two levels. The first one will be primarily used as a brewing process, manufacturing process for the beer area, as well as seating for a tap house and area as well. The second story will be utilized primarily as office space with some additional recreational areas as well. Access to the site will be provided off the existing driveway that services the 435 property as well as this and several others in the area. This will be reconfigured and brought to be more well-defined, so there's a more concentrated location for traffic pulling and entering off of Lancaster Street, so there won't be any new curb cuts associated with that. I will note that there is a weird jug handle for the access drive that kind of comes around this property and comes into the Viscloidy intersection. As part of the process, we're intending to remove that completely from the Lancaster Street area, so there will be only one way, one out of the property itself. Access to the site, provided two different driveway curb cuts, if you will, that'll provide access to parking. The first one will be utilized primarily as patron parking, with the second one to be utilized more for employees, overflow patron parking, as well as deliveries. For this kind of element, you don't typically see large semi-trucks delivering day-to-day materials, typically smaller box trucks, so we don't have a significant area that's typically required for loading. So box trucks will typically pull in here, back out, or turn around in this area, and exit back out to Lancaster Street. Per the code, we're required to have 55 parking spaces. Right now, we're showing 78, so we're getting access to that. What the board might be aware is that there's been several concerns raised by the various departments relative to a comprehensive parking plan. This project was brought forward during the winter season, so we weren't able to get outside to do a full on-the-ground survey to figure out how to make the parking fully work. But now that we're coming into the spring season, we're able to get outside, do the on-the-ground survey, do the layout that's required to construct that. So that's to come in the coming weeks. That will require site plan review, so it will be coming back before the board because of the number of parking spaces we're creating. So that'll be done for the 435 property itself. As part of the overall department head review process, we did provide a very, very high-level parking configuration plan for the 435 property back in 2008. Obviously, some things are changed during that time, but that parking plan created in excess of 40 spaces, a little bit required at that time. Obviously, that's changed now. With the reconfiguration, we're still looking at a net surplus, however, we're anticipating, but we will be reviewing that as part of future levels of development and prior to construction of the Tap House facility. So I just wanted to make sure the board was aware of that. We do know that it's a very big item that the departments and cities have raised with us, and we're working to get that accomplished. As for the utilities on the site, stormwater will be accommodated with deep-some catch basins and water quality units directed towards a on-the-ground storage system. This will be provide compliance with the current stormwater ordinance with the city as well as an SDEP, so we're addressing the stormwater. Sewage, we're anticipating to connect to the municipal system. We have been in talks with DPW as well as brewery manufacturing companies and other people in the industry to figure out what level of pretreatment, if any, is required for this kind of use. We're anticipating some form of a grease trap potentially, or some kind of similar function. Obviously, it's still a flux of providing areas dedicated for this kind of pretreatment, if necessary. And obviously, this will be reviewed with DPW prior to construction. Water will provide, be provided with a civil system or connection with the domestic service as well as a fire suppression system. Gas and electric utilities are being coordinated with National Grid. Some of the other benefits to the site, the site will be constructed in essentially two levels, just for usability purposes of the site. You'll have the primary level, which will be where the parking is. This will provide access to the tap house and brewery levels. There'll be an outdoor patio seating area immediately along Lancaster Street, and then there'll be a secondary level off of that that provides access to a recreational area to provide for the patrons during their time at the brewery itself. Right now, this is also kind of a flux right now, but we're anticipating doing two baji courts and two horse pitts. This is still being determined by the project proponent, but will be ultimately decided prior to construction by its intent to provide some additional recreational space for the patrons while they're there. There is quite a bit of an elevation relief from the upper pad area to Lancaster Street, so we will be constructing a retaining wall along Lancaster Street, along the perimeter of the site, to allow for that enhanced usability space on the property. This will be provided with wall protection, fencing, pretty much everything you've never imagined, to prevent people from going over that. But that will be reviewed by the building department and the stand-by structural engineer when that time comes. With me tonight is Chris, I apologize and I'm butcher your name, Chris Prudhomme, founder of Zephar Architects. He's here to talk a little bit more about the building. I can throw those up if you'd like. Just give you an overview of what the intent of the building is going to be. This would be the view from Lancaster Street at the Viscloidy intersection. Chris, if there's any comments you want to make?
Yeah, trying to give you a good understanding.
Did you want to say your name? I know he introduced you, but did you want to say your name for the record?
Yep, Chris Prudhomme from Zephar Architects. As we were kind of trying to put this building in context for you, giving you a street perspective from Lancaster, understanding what you're going to be seeing from all the various angles. From this particular view, we're looking at kind of the broadside towards facing the kind of existing industrial buildings to our left, the old plastic factories. So what we're trying to do in this design is pay homage to that history of this area and of Lemonster. The current name for the facility is the Pink Flamingo Brewery or Pink Flamingo Tap House, because we are trying to make this something that is very anchored to this place and its history. So we are trying to treat this as a modern ground-up building, but paying attention to what the history of this space was. You will notice from this particular vantage point that we don't have a ton of fenestration along this backside. It is more focused towards the Lancaster Street and towards the patio area that wraps around the front of the building. Chris, you could bring us to our next rendering. We have a couple more images that we want to present to you, so you can get a good understanding. This is an aerial view from basically the same location to give you an understanding of what we're trying to achieve with the mass and form of the building, as well as give you an overall context for the two-level patio situation that you see towards the bottom-right portion of the rendering to create these different areas and zones for pedestrian and customer using of spaces for recreation, whether it's the baji courts or it's some fire pits and outdoor seating, whether it's covered or open to the sky above. Also taken from Lancaster, we're just changing the perspective here a little bit more to give you a view from what is essentially the parking lot, but this is one of our main focal points and facades of the building, where it is showing up a little bit dark, but we have a single-layer or a single-story brick kind of wrapping around a larger two-story space that has sawtooth-designed roof system. This allows for lighting to penetrate deeper into the building, as well as kind of reflect upon the pink flamingo and the biomechanics of feathers and wings, for kind of lack of a better explanation. But we are trying to, like I said before, achieve an industrial look, but in a more modern contemporary fashion. Chris, do you have any other images?
Those are only three of them.
Okay. Happy to answer any more questions you might have about this space. Probably have forgotten or left something out, but we have put a tremendous amount of effort and time, and we're really excited about this project.
That's great.
What's the area zone, Chris?
Business B.
We did want to point out real quick as staff, I did confirm with Chris that the brewery at this point is only going to be serving beer to patrons in the location. But if you do get to the point where you want to expand and grow and export product out, you're going to be considered a light manufacturing use, which currently, as it stands, you can't do that in a business BB zone, business B zone. But you are adjacent to a zone where that would allow light manufacturing, and you could go for a rezone, but you'd have to go through the process with city council. So if you think you're going to want to go that route, you might want to start that sooner rather than later, so that you're able to expand when you want to.
Thank you.
Yes, a question.
Go ahead, John.
Hello?
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, the date, are they quiet to manufacture this stuff outside?
That was a no.
We just said that they're not going to, John.
Okay.
Would this be?
So be strictly internal consumption?
Correct.
Okay.
With respect to the rezoning, would this be, would be considered spot zoning?
No, it wouldn't be, because you're adjacent to a zone.
Okay, so it would be the reorganization or redrawing of those district lines to now include us into the light industrial?
Industrial, yep.
So it's actually MU1?
MU1.
So right now, you're not going, you're not making the beer there?
No, it is, so it's.
They're not going to sell it.
It's for consumption.
So you're not going to have growlers or cans or anything?
That would be considered almost served on-site, and people would come, almost like a grocery store or a takeout restaurant.
Okay, but, okay.
They're not shipping.
You're not shipping it, I understand.
Is that in the future plans?
At the moment, it is not. The intention is more the kind of process that Chris was just referring to of people coming and purchasing it at that location, but not necessarily shipping. It might be in the future, and I'll have to confirm with my client if that is, in fact, the kind of future prospect of this space, but at this moment, that is not the intent. But we will confirm that before we return next time with the intention in the future.
A restaurant might would be perceiving their consumption on-site.
Yes.
But they could sell beer, right? People can leave with it.
Yeah.
You can leave with a growler kind of a mentality, or if you want to buy a case. Would it change the, tell me, let me walk away with a case?
No, because it says, under definition of light manufacturing, it says.
If there was to be any canning line installed into the site and mass production of cans like that, it's, I almost guarantee the building is not large enough for that kind of a function, but for the growlers and can, large can growlers, if you will, those are more like takeout, if you will. Now, if you come to the site, you come down, you pick it up, and you're off on your way. I don't have any talks involved.
Light manufacturer, manufacturer is defined as an establishment or activity primarily engaged in manufacturing, production, or assembly, which does not involve on the premises the use of heat, noise, or odor generating producing processes, which are detectable off-site. Incidental activities such as storage offices, wholesale sales, retail sales, employee-only recreation and eating facilities are permitted.
Okay, anyone, anyone, does anyone would like to speak in favor of the project, or have any other comments?
My name is Rich Fusco. I'm the client and sponsor of the project. You know, as a lifelong resident of Lemonster, I think this project, you know, I think Lemonster really could use a brewery. You know, this brewery is not about, you know, the beers that we have or the people that brew the beers. It's going to be more about the community of Lemonster. It's going to celebrate the history of Lemonster. It's, you know, we're hoping, you know, depending on the licensing and some of the other things that we've talked about tonight, getting those issues resolved. You know, we want to be able to offer beers on tap from other small breweries in the area, River Sticks or Sterling Street or Thirsty Robot. You know, we want to be a good community player that celebrates the history of Lemonster.
Anyone else like to speak in favor? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? Board members, do you have any other comments?
Do you want to read the department's comments?
Yes, we'll do that. I just want to know if there were any other comments from the, I'll go by, I'll go by Mr. Hanigan's correspondence dated March 18th, which has, which has the comments incorporated. From the planning department, comprehensive parking plan, provide a comprehensive parking plan for the newly proposed business at 41 Lancaster Street and the existing business at 435 Lancaster Street. The result must be adequate parking to serve all uses. The response is acknowledged. This owner is planning on removing some of the existing construction uses on the abutting 435 Lancaster Street site, which will allow additional parking to be developed in this area. Some buildings will be reconfigured over the next few months. This will require a separate site plan approval from the planning board. Due to winter conditions during the initial survey, this office has not performed the full existing conditions of this abutting site. It is expected that the required survey will be completed within the coming weeks, at which time the parking can be developed. Provided with this review is a copy of previous parking analysis that was performed as part of a previous development by the landowner in 2008. Based on the uses at that time, a total of 183 parking spaces were acquired with 222 provided, a surplus of 39 parking spaces. As part of the brewery project, the 30 parking spaces located along the shared property line are being reconfigured. Although the results is, although this results in a loss of approximately 20 spaces, there would be, still be a surplus of 19. The new parking plan is anticipated to add 25 to 30 additional spaces. Comment seven, all uses combined bring the parking requirement to 55 spaces. A total of 78 are provided. The proposed parking is adequate for the proposed use. However, it must be demonstrated that the adjacent businesses also have an adequate parking. Acknowledged, as noted above, an adequate parking plan will be developed for the abut site at 435. Comment eight, dimensions of parking spaces must meet criteria as detailed in the relevant section. Parking spaces at 90-degree angles are proposed to be sized 9 by 18. Indicate the width and the dimensions. Typical dimensions are depicted on the original submittal. The parking spaces are noted at 9 by 8, 18, with all maneuvering aisles at 24, with the exception of near the loading area, where the width is 56 feet. Access, as to access, the police department will evaluate the site to confirm that all building structures, uses, equipment, and materials are readily accessible for police and fire protection. Acknowledged, comments as provided by police and fire are reviewed below. Sidewalk, all sidewalks shall be not less than five feet width for the relevant section. Indicate the sidewalk width for the sidewalk parallel to Lancaster Street on the plan. The sidewalk in this area is five feet in width. A notation will be added. Lighting, add a note to the plan indicating compliance with the relevant sections. A note referencing compliance with the sections of the ordinance will be added to the plan set. The final plan will be provided to the department prior to construction. Stormwater, per the relevant section, stormwater detail has been provided and will be reviewed by the DPW. Acknowledged. Location map, inaccurate scale map at a scale of 1 to 1,000 must be submitted showing the subject property and all properties and streets within 1,000 feet. The locus map provided is a scale of 1 to 100. Response, the locus map provided on the cover sheet will be updated to have the, to be at a scale of 1 to 1,000. Per the relevant section, include the location, size, height, orientation, and design of all signs. Aside from parking and directional signage, no additional signage is anticipated on the property. Building signage will be in compliance with the ordinance. Architectural elevations per the relevant section, provided an architectural elevation for the newly proposed building, elevations have been provided as part of the initial site plan submittal. Conservation, there are no areas jurisdictional to the comm according to vast bumper and the submitted site plans. Response is acknowledged. No comment from the assessor. Wire, need to remove and re-time lights from driveway. Response is acknowledged. Traffic detection wire within the existing driveway at Viscloidy and Lancaster Streets will be removed and the signal reprogrammed appropriately. This work will be coordinated with police, DPW, and wire. Fire department, the building is going to need a sprinkler system compliant with the relevant CMRs. It will also need a fire alarm system compliant with the relevant CMRs. They'll need to see engineered stance drawings with code review indicating that prior to the building construction phase, and a narrative indicating so prior to preliminary site approval. Acknowledged, prior to construction, the formal fire suppression system will be prepared and submitted. Also from fire, prior to preliminary site approval, they will need to see fire apparatus access, water supply, and churning radius compliant with the relevant CMRs. They also saw the attached plans, but it doesn't appear to indicate the distances between parking and road space. A vehicle, the response is a vehicle turning sketch has been prepared documenting the ability for a ladder truck to make a complete churning maneuver within the parking area in front of a building. From this point, the entire building is accessible within a 250-foot path, as required. Building, this plan removes about 56 parking spots from 435. Acknowledged, as noted above, which has already been read into the record, an updated parking plan will be developed. Board of health, will need total amount of seats for the sizing of the grease trap. The proposed brewery is not expecting to prepare food directly on-site as part of its daily activities. The grease trap has been placed on the plan as a placeholder should the need arise. A final review of any anticipated kitchen flows will be reviewed prior to construction. Please provide plans for the kitchen layout with cut sheets for all planned appliances to be used prior to construction. Acknowledged, if food preparation is provided at the site, the appropriate cut sheets will be provided prior, as part of the building permit process. Police, under the ADA guidelines, the proposed 78, with 78 spaces, at least three need to be designated as a handicap. Acknowledged, the plan shows a total of four. A traffic study for the proposed project has not been completed at this time, and the department would like to review this project for approval. A review of the traffic signal will be performed with the DPW, wire, and police department prior to construction to address changes in signal turning that may be required. This will be performed in conjunction with a traffic engineer. DPW, confirmed with the fire department, there is added a fire access, we already talked about that, prior design and details of the optical retaining walls with fall protection prior to approval. As noted, the site plans, all retain wall systems, all retaining wall systems have been designed to incorporate fall protection due to their anticipated height. The final retaining wall designs will be provided to the building department and the DPW prior to construction. The final design drawings are prepared at the time based on the material supplier. It should be noted that the site plan has taken into account the typical wall batter that is required to construct this wall to ensure adequate space has been provided. Existing hydrant to be removed on sheet two is shown on sheets three and four. The existing hydrant to be removed has been eliminated from those sheets. Existing hydrant by the entrance will need to be relocated. It will be relocated and will be adjacent to the entrance driveway to the property. Provide a new hydrant to the south side, an additional will be provided. It appears there are two area drains along the north side of the building. Please provide elevations. Additional information will be provided for these structures on the construction site. What volume of influent from the brewing process is expected to be discharged into the sewer system? The final size and equipment for the brewing equipment is currently being finalized as part of the final utility connection review process. Accurate volume will be provided to the DPW. A state in your cover letter, please coordinate with the engineering department to set up a meeting to discuss the disposition of flows from the brewing process, and if any pretreatment is required, this is acknowledged and they will do so. Provide a label for each design point on the subcatchment maps. Updated subcatchment maps will be provided. That's everything. Anyone else have any comments from the board? John, any other comments?
No, I think they're fairly well-covered. My biggest concern was the parking for 435, that's taken care of before they, you know, they open. You know, that issue is, it goes away. They've got to do their parking plan, which we originally approved.
So do we close the hearing, or do we table it until we get the parking plan?
Well, that's a question I got. Well, that's a question I got is, have we got anything for the people with 435? Because at the stand right now, they haven't done it. And if they go ahead with this plan, they're just going to wipe out what they're using for parking now. Or they're going to send it out. Do we have any input on 435?
So, uh... The 435 owner is, for current, in line with the 481 property owner. So it is a... It's under shared common ownership, for lack of a better term. Obviously, there's a lot of moving parts that have been going forward since the project first started back in the beginning of the winter. Obviously, we haven't been able to do it because this area is utilized as a snow storage area for various areas around this property. So we haven't been able to complete the actual on-the-ground survey, which has been the biggest hiccup in the entire process. To add on to the 435 parking plan, currently, the property does... is utilized as part of the construction company that's on the property. So there's a lot of heavy equipment, a lot of excess storage buildings, if you will, for lack of a better term, interspersed throughout the site. As part of this redevelopment of this area, a lot of those buildings are going to be removed. Some of the auxiliary buildings will be removed. The 435 owner is actively removing the construction equipment from the site, so referring up a lot more land space than was originally prepared in 2008. For the 435 property, based on that and just the general reconfiguration, reutilization of the building, we feel that we have more than adequate space to provide that required parking count for the 435 property, even with the removal of parking spaces for the four... for the craft brewery. So we have a lot of land to work with in order to create that parking plan, so we don't foresee any issues hitting that parking count for that development. So we're requesting that that be provided as part of the 435 project, not this project in and of itself. Because that's... Unfortunately, two separate properties, but we are working towards preparing that plan, but we don't want to hold up the permit process for the craft brewery system itself.
I realize that, and I appreciate the work, okay? And what you say all sounds great, but 435 was supposed to have done all this site work years ago, and they never did. Okay? So I hate to say it, but they have a discussion for 435. Their actions precede what they're doing today. So I'd like to see it go forward, but I've got to have some kind of assurances from the management of 435 of what their plan is and what they're going to prove, not just somebody saying, "I'm going to have something right."
How many plans... How many spaces are you showing on that plan?
Right now, we're showing 78 on the property, 481 property itself.
And I'm... And you need only 55?
Correct.
What's there for payment?
Payment for right now?
Yeah, but if they take all those spaces for 35, they still have to close their doors because they don't have... They don't have enough parking.
Do they lose from...
You lose about... So there'll be about 19 spaces removed physically on the 481 property that are being utilized by the 435 property.
It's 19, you said?
19 spaces. So there is some loss of parking that's on the site.
The question is all the parking.
It's a open paved area right now.
There's lines there.
There's some lines there. So we try to salvage those as much as possible, but they're not truly compliant with the zoning ordinance. I think a way around this would be, if the board would be willing, is to condition that the 435 prior to construction of the 481, because there's going to be... There's still a little bit of last time between today and when we can physically put a shovel in the ground for the 481. So it's plenty of time to get that parking plan developed. And honestly, we have to come back before the board at that point because it hits site plan approval criteria and all that's associated with that. But I think conditioning it that way, it puts a, you know, for lack of a better term, a block on the 481 until the 435 parking is situated.
So 435 loses 19 spots, but you're providing 23 more spots than you're required to?
Yes.
I... See, I don't understand why... I don't think there's... I don't think anyone is going to be deprived of parking spots.
Right.
So I guess I'm deferring to the chair why he thinks that's the case.
What I'd like to see is staff is a diagram of both properties with all of the uses broken down, so that I can calculate exactly how many spaces are needed. And then a diagram on the ground showing both sites with the... Well, you have the current site with the parking, but I'd like to see the 435 with the parking designated for 435 with the current uses. And then that's how I could recommend to the board.
Can we condition it? Before... Arctic seal before putting the shovel in the ground? That seems quite a mess right now in terms of parking.
Well, it's just the 435.
Carol?
We have an answer there?
I totally believe there's enough parking. I totally believe in the area that there's enough parking to get this all done. Okay? But we just got to get it clarified between 435 and the new pub. Okay? Because 435 never followed through with their original plan. So I'm just trying to get that, you know, clarified because, you know, in essence... Yeah, I know you're working together. I'm sure you're working together, you know? But I'm saying that in essence, you could conceivably, without a condition on that, 435 can get a new site plan approval. And I have a problem where I think I can't condition another site on your site. I mean, I can't put a condition on 435, on your site, against 435. They're different ownerships. And these are before us.
They're not different ownerships.
Okay, so I have a problem there. And maybe I need a legal opinion. I have to tell you the truth, I just don't know.
I'm making the assumption, and I'm sure it can be answered tonight, that it's two separate entities, but the beneficiaries of those entities are the same.
Yes, ma'am.
That's correct, but Carol, we still can't put...
Well, but John, if you own ABC Corporation and then you own XYZ Corporation, they're two separate entities, but you're the beneficiary of the... of both entities, so...
But he's right, though. You can't try to...
Carol, you're better at that than I am.
Well, I don't know. I mean, if you're looking for something in writing, can we get...
Just to be... I'm trying to be cautious. That's all. Okay? Yeah, I'll defer to whatever you think, you know?
Well, I don't...
You understand that stuff better than I do.
The 435 is a tenant. The restaurant, 435 is a tenant. But it's the ones that create mostly traffic over there, but there are also other things over there. There's a lot of things in there. You know, there's workout places. There's a lot of things, a lot of odd things. Could we get... Are they going to be his tenants too of the property?
Yes.
Okay. Could we get the diagram that Elizabeth is asking for?
Yes, that will be provided to the board. That... It's going to be done as part of the overall development because with this project, you're substantially altering the 435's parking. Granted, the 435 parking has legally...
Yeah, that's kind of the Wild West.
Yeah, it's approached onto the 481 property, obviously, but at the end of the day, it's only a name only. But because of this reconfiguration, you also have... The 481 property also has to access over the 435 property, so there's a lot of crossesements between the property owner and what's called a tenant, for lack of a better term, of the property in order to get it figured out between the two. So it's beneficial to both parties, even though they're on common ownership, it's separate ownership, and all the tenants involved to get the parking configuration ironed out.
So John, if we get this diagram that Elizabeth asked for, she verifies there is sufficient space, would that satisfy your concern?
I think it would.
Okay, so let's just do that. We don't want to slow them down.
So is it conditioned?
Yeah, I mean, we don't do that.
As I was saying, we need to come back.
Yeah.
I think that seems to address everybody's issue.
Okay. So is someone going to... Unless there's something else we need to discuss, does someone have a motion to close the hearing if that's the...
So...
No, I don't think so. I think if, you know, that plus you got a lot of good comment, so we'll just follow up with those.
Okay. I'll second that motion.
To me, most of these comments are duplicative.
Right, yeah.
Motion being second to close the hearing. All those in favor?
Do we have to do a roll call for the judge?
Yes. Roll call, both.
Patrick Perla, excused. Paul Weiser. Satya Kuni, excused. Carol Chirviterioso.
Yes.
John Siza.
Yes.
Tom Kerrigan.
Yes.
Jason Parry.
Yes.
Dean Baurer, excused.
Thank you. We'll be back shortly.
Thank you.
Good. Good use of that space. We need to... Hey, sorry, I didn't say hi before. You caught me off guard.
It's okay. I've seen you in a long time.
Yeah, how's Tom doing?
Doing well.
Good.
He's doing good?
Yes.
Good.
Good to hear.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, let's open up the 640 Public Informational Meeting for a major modification of site plan approval for 900 Central Street, Heim Hill. Map 317, Parcels 5A-2, Map 317, Parcel C1, Map 317, Parcel 10, and Parcel 5B-3.
You back?
I'm back.
Only game in town.
Yeah, I guess you're... Billy is.
I know you are.
All dies. Just play to the one happy. So for the record, Chris Harrison with Hanning Engineering here on behalf of Liberty Razzo Core for a major site plan modification to an existing site plan approval for an assisted living facility off of Brooks Pond Road. This project was brought before the board a little while back for the construction of a series of assisted living facility buildings on the front portions of Brooks Pond Road properties adjacent to Central Street. Just to orientate ourselves here, we have Brooks Pond, the right... Brooks Pond Road, I apologize, that runs along the side of the page. We have Central Street through here, with Brooks Pond itself just off the page to the north here. Auto parts store. And the overall auto parts store in here. Originally, the board had approved of a assisted living building that was located exclusively on the 15 Brooks Pond Road property, which was truncated approximately in this location and provided an area for 25 residential units on the property within that building itself. Since that time, it's the intent of the applicant to expand upon this building and provide several key features to this. One, provide additional units within the building itself, as well as provide additional parking spaces for the tenants of the building, employees, and whatnot, for the development itself. There was adequate parking back in the original approval, but it's felt that it needs to be lowered with more parking. As such, providing an additional 53 parking spaces. That'll be provided access off of Central Street, and that'll provide access directly to the proposed building. Upon completion of this construction, there will be approximately 57 dwelling units within this building, so we're increasing it by about 32 units. And it's the intent to maintain the same level of function in the building as it was originally approved, which is more of a... Excuse me. An assisted living function where the tenants have some independence, but they also have the added amenities located within the building if they so choose. Besides that, we're providing very similar connections. All the sewer and water drainage and everything's coming off of Brooks Pond Road, so no modification has been for that. And the opposite side of Brooks Pond Road has remained untouched. That's pretty much the gist of the modifications. If there's any questions from the board, I'll... We might have an answer.
Is that a new curb cut off your pole or did that exist?
It's existed in some former function for a while. There used to be a single-family home that was on the property, and this has been utilized as the entrance point to that, as well as the general development in this area.
And that 40 is ready?
This 40, yes.
I'll... I'll read the comments from the departments. Police Department, under the ADA... I feel like I'm reading the same ones over again, that's why. Under the ADA guidelines, one parking space needs to be designated handicap parking for every 25 parking spaces. There are 177 parking spaces proposed. So there will need to be six parking spaces designated for handicap parking. No traffic issues. I'm assuming that is...
Yeah, so it's the overall development, we have more than enough handicap spaces, but what we've done is we kind of cumulative, we have enough spaces. What we've also done is we looked at the individual parking areas themselves, provide the required number of handicap spaces based on that unit count. So for example, in the new parking area, by code, you need to have two handicap spaces. We're providing that with one being an accessible space, so it's all being addressed.
All right. You have at least six?
Yes.
And it used to.
I know. Building approves. DPW approves. Fire. Will the proposed modification and added parking affect the water supply, fire apparatus access, and churning radiuses as required?
So the fire suppression system is still off into the line off of Brooks Pond Road, which was designed by the fire suppression engineer. We've actually provided a little bit more accessibility for the fire department because of the larger, more open expanse parking lot area, so there's more availability for churning maneuvers in this area, as well as now providing much more flatter areas around the building as well as part of this.
Assessor, no comments. Approves. Conservation. The applicant has filed an amended order of conditions request with the commission. It will be on a meeting for March 8th to review changes. Did you meet on March 8th and did anything happen?
No, they didn't have form, so we'll be actually seeing them tomorrow.
Okay. Board of Health approves, and that's it?
My phone is...
Plan, yes. It's... No, it's a major. That's why it's a hearing. Yeah.
My memo is the March 2nd.
Yes, I s...
There were conditions from the December 7th, 2020 approval that still stand.
Okay, so you're wa... You're waiving the landscaping plan or requesting a waiver for the landscaping plan?
From an licensed architect.
Carol, do you want to see this?
Yeah, I'm reading it from the phone here. I forgot mine. Okay, and then... The subject property is located in commercial C... Site plan approval is required, okay? So you're just... There's nothing new, Elizabeth? You're just looking for...
No, there's the December 7th, 2020 dis却ment. And then there's on page three. My review starts. The parking was fine. Snow storage was fine. There is a comment on landscaping about indicate the species of the proposed tree plant. There is a comment on landscaping about indicate the species of the proposed tree plantings. And then, starting at the top of page four, um, I had nine items.
Okay, so, um, per the ordinance, the police and fire shall review the proposal to ensure that all building structures, uses, equipment, and material are readily accessible. We've discussed that. Lighting, please elaborate the lighting plan. Indicate the presence of all lighting fixtures on the plan. Um, detail all provisions of the relevant section that will be met. Per, um, the ordinance, development of the site shall preserve sensitive environmental land features including wetlands. The majority of this proposed development is within 100 feet, and we've already discussed the pond from flood. Um, per the section of the ordinance, confirm the zone as depicted on the FEMA firm maps from 1982. Landscaping, per the ordinance, landscaping must comply with the relevant section. Landscaping detail is listed on the table contents as being displayed on sheets L one and L two. However, these pages are not included in the plan set. Please include missing pages, including more information regarding landscaping, including species and tree height and caliber. Also, in the relevant section, the proposal shall demonstrate the existing trees are preserved to the maximum extent possible. Based on the proposal, the majority of the existing trees on site are proposed to be removed. The cover letter indicates that a waiver is being requested for some landscaping requirements. Per the relevant section, stormwater runoff detail is required and was provided. It was provided, it is being reviewed by the DPW section. The, um, all, per the relevant section, all abutting properties within 300 feet of the site location to the plan. Per the relevant section, confirm, oh, add all abutting. Confirm that any and all easements and ROW are detailed on the site plan. Indicate any proposed signage and include architectural elevations for proposed new buildings.
And then there's the other section that they had to do because they were non-residential buildings.
The stormwater report shall be reviewed by the DPW, and they've, I believe they've approved it. As mentioned above, provisions regarding the relevant section regarding outdoor lighting shall be met. Um, met, also mentioned above, landscaping standards as detailed in the relevant section shall be met. It includes the requirement that landscaping design shall be prepared by a registered landscaper architect. The applicant is requesting that waiver. Uh, they, uh, site plan must also adhere to other relevant sections. For C, lighting standards, access standards. Police and fire have commented. The applicant must demonstrate that the project will, or use will minimize traffic or safety impacts on highways. The board may require the applicant to submit a traffic study. Bicycle racks required, landscaping standards, and the traffic impact statement. The site plan approval is issued by a majority vote, or five out of eight. Do you have any comments, um, on those, Chris?
Uh, nope. So the landscape plan or diagram, we'll call it, um, it was developed by an landscape architects, uh, was submitted as part of the construction process for the original projects. Uh, same type that we just kind of expand that into this area and provide that as well, uh, once they get closer to planting season for this area. Um, relative to traffic, um, as part of the original approval, there was a traffic plan that was the, in turn, a, um, traffic study was performed, uh, reviewing the overall development relative to what was done way back when Brooks Pond was first done. Uh, we modified that and amended it based on the calculations at that point. Long and short is, uh, even with the additional units, we're still well below the threshold that was determined back when this was all supposed to be a commercial development. It's part of the first round of Brooks Pond Road, so that's still compliant. Um, relative to easements and everything like that, that's all shown. Um, and I think the only wild or outstanding item on that, uh, minus a few clerical things, would be the bicycle rack. Um, we have plenty of space immediately around the entrance of the building over here to provide that can easily accommodate a car to the completion of the project. And lighting is currently being developed by the metro.
Okay, so the only waiver you're looking for is?
The landscape architect.
Okay.
Rich Kieran Lewis and project and how it looks. We don't think he's going to stop. Probably not a problem.
But you're not doing a new traffic study for this addition, so you would need a waiver from the car.
Well, we did a traffic analysis in our supplemental.
Well, wasn't the original traffic study, there was certain X amount of units in there?
Correct.
And that threshold was same?
Yes, I mean, we pretty much took that and modified it to the additional units that are here and compared that to the original MIBA approval.
Okay, so the original approval was set for so many units, and where are we now? Are we above that number or below that?
So so based on, I apologize, I could have read this section.
I mean, I would think that, that below that original number was not an issue.
So I don't think they're below.
Hmm?
I don't think they're below.
So when we look at
Yeah, they were well.
So what we did was, we took the original approved traffic plan from the MIBA process when this was all supposed to be commercial. We've modified that back during the original approval process to be this use, the assisted living use. During that process, we found that we dropped approximately 294 vehicle trips, uh, from the commercial development to this development because residential's will usually be a less impactful use. Um, from there, we pretty much took the additional, uh, 32 units, applied the trip count to that, added on to that, and, uh, figured out what the new decrease in the traffic count is. And that would be approximately 225, uh, vehicle trips per day over the commercial development. So we're still well below the original threshold for the design of Brooks Pond Road area.
And it's an additional 32.
Yes. It's additional 32 units, but we see that decrease in traffic daily usage.
Okay.
So without a reason, I'd probably be okay with that. That's what we have to do.
And again, not a population with lots of traffic.
Okay, any, anything else? Um, I'm not going to ask if anyone here is speaking in favor or opposed because there's nobody here. But does the board have any other comments? John, do you have any comments?
No, um, I think it's going to be a funny looking building, but I the way it wraps around, uh,
He is, so. He's actually on the side.
It'll look nice with the sunings on.
Yeah.
Yes.
I move to closing here.
Well, we don't, but we don't do it aesthetic, so, uh,
Yeah.
I only, they meet their requirement, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, uh, Paula's made a motion to close the hearing, Tom second. Um, all those in favor, roll call, please.
Patrick Perla, excused. Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi, excused. Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
John Siza.
Yes.
Tom Carrigan.
Yes.
Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Valier, excused.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. In a minute.
Go to the regular meeting, call.
No.
Call the order.
Patrick Perla, excused. Paul Weiser. Sal Chaconi, excused. Carol Vittorioso.
Here.
Sal, John Siza.
Yo.
Tom Carrigan.
Here.
Jason Parre.
Here.
Dean Valier.
Excuse.
Excuse.
I thought you said I was coming.
Uh, minutes of previous meeting, September, uh, February seventh, 2022.
Those are, um, in front of you, and I added them to my front packets, meaning.
Any comments? Conditions, deletions?
Yeah, they look good doing, very complete.
I move to a seven minutes.
Motion made, second by Jason. All those in favor, roll call, please.
Patrick Perla, excused. John, Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi, excused. Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
John Siza.
Yes.
Tom Carrigan.
Yes.
Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Valier, excused.
Okay, plan submitted. Site plan application for Wolf Street, map 500, parcel two, solar energy storage system.
Okay, so we have an application for a renewable energy system. Um, it's been determined by the building commissioner that it needs site plan approval, and they have a completed application. We have available, um, April fourth. We already have something at 6:40.
April fourth. What are the two things we have on April fourth?
Starbucks, Merrim Avenue is at 6:30, and Overflow Lots is at 6:40.
Do you think Starbucks is really going to come?
I haven't heard that.
It won't be. So we have 6:30.
6:50? That's fine. I have a motion.
Uh, yep, so 6:40.
Fourth.
Four.
And then six fifty PM.
In a second.
Motion made, do I have a second for that?
Second.
Motion made, second, all those in favor, roll call, vote.
Patrick Perla, excused. Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi, excused. Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
John Siza.
Yes.
Tom Carrigan.
Yes.
Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Valier, excused.
No old business, five point, oh, new business, 5.1 site plan for 481 Lancaster Street, Craft Brewery, and Tap House. It's the board what to do.
Well, I think it's a beautiful project. So we, we want to, I want to move to recommend approval of the project subject to, and I mean, it was the, the parking diagram that you wanted.
Is there a landscape waiver? Comprehensive parking plan.
Comprehensive.
You gotta deal with waivers.
And, uh, uh, subject to all department head comments with the landscape.
Are they looking for any waivers?
They're looking for landscaping, yeah.
We have to do that one first.
Okay, sorry, so that was.
No, I just, I didn't realize.
All right, so I move to grant the waiver of the landscape architect to.
I second that.
Motion made, was seconded to approve the waiver for the landscape architect. All those in favor, roll call.
Patrick Perla, excused. Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi, excused. Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
John Siza.
Yes.
Tom Carrigan.
Yes.
Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Valier, excused.
So now I move to recommend the plan conditioned upon the comprehensive parking plan and subject to all department head comments.
Can we also have? Can you say outstanding ones because the ones that are resolved?
Sure, all outstanding department head.
Can we also have Elizabeth review the conditions prior to the issue of occupancy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, that's my plan.
So move to the second.
Okay, motion made with conditions. Motion made to approve the site plan with conditions. And seconded, all those in favor, roll to call vote.
Patrick Perla, excused. Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi, excused. Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
John Siza.
Yes.
Tom Carrigan.
Yes.
Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Valier. Excuse.
5.2, major modification of site plan approved for 900 Central Street, Pine Hill. We have a waiver, same waiver, request. So I'll need a motion on that.
It was just the one that would have the landscape.
I think we determined that this traffic study from previous was fine, so we gave it.
So, yeah, so I move to.
And the landscape would have waived the landscape.
Right, approve it, the waiver, the landscape architect.
Okay, motion made?
Second.
Second.
Patrick Perla, excused. Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi, excused. Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
John Siza.
Yes.
Tom Carrigan.
Yes.
Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Valier, excused.
Okay.
And now we move to approve the major modification of site approval subject to the department head comments, outstanding department head.
And Elizabeth.
And Elizabeth.
Around and that's everyone going for.
All right.
Police.
Motion made with conditions. Motion made for approval of site plan with conditions. Do I have a second?
I'm sorry.
Second, all those in favor, roll call.
Patrick Perla, excused. Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi, excused. Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
John Siza.
Yes.
Tom Carrigan.
Yes.
Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Okay, great. 6.0 communications, 6.1 appoint chair and vice chair for 2022.
We were supposed to do this in January. We didn't have, we were missing some members at the last meeting, so you
And we are again.
Continued it to now, and we're missing, now we're missing three members, but we do have, well.
It's not a super contentious vote. I think we could probably.
All right, I nominate John Siza. Let's get going here. I nominate John Siza as chair.
I second.
I don't know, I am not nominating myself.
All right, let's do it.
Do I have to accept?
No.
Do you want to, do you want to accept this question?
Okay.
All right.
It's a roll call.
Motion made, I made the motion, you said Paul second, and all those in favor of John Siza continuing as chair?
Patrick Perla, excused. Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi, excused. Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
John Siza, you can vote for yourself, it's okay. Tom Carrigan.
Yes.
Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Valier, excuse.
Well, it would have been, didn't it?
That he hears.
Yeah, he hears that. He can hear anything else, but we.
Can we reappoint Carol Vittorioso as vice chair?
I second that.
I'll, I'll take it.
Okay, so motion made and seconded?
Patrick Perla, excused. Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi, excuse. Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
John Siza.
Yes.
Tom Carrigan.
Yes.
Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Valier, excuse.
Okay.
Okay, 6.2, planning board members up for reappointment. Carol Vittorioso, Sal Chaconi, Tom Carrigan. So my
All I want to say is you guys do.
Vice chair appointment is contingent upon my actual appointment.
You've got to relate to the mayor's office. I cheated.
I did, we all did.
We all did.
Sal, I reminded him, the only one that hasn't is Sal. I reminded him, and he said he would do it.
You were texting, he couldn't have just sent a
He said he will do it.
He'll do it. He has to, I think the time has come and gone for him to do it.
He can make the next agenda. If you guys have thought for his day and then it's me.
Okay.
Elizabeth, can you make sure that third?
Yep. All right, 6.3 zoning amendment, sole ordinance, planning board to make a motion to petition the city council.
Okay, an update, we had a subcommittee meeting with, um, city council member Pete Angelini and Patrick Perla and I, and we went through, we went through the ordinance and addressed the council's concerns. So, uh, ultimately, this has to get through city council or it's going to die. So we tried to accommodate city council. There was nothing going in that Patrick or I felt was, um, that we couldn't accept. If you look at your paper in front of you, the track changes show the differences between the board's version, this is not the differences between the existing ordinance and what's proposed. This is what the board approved and petitioned the city council with. It got tabled for so long that they had to withdraw it. So it's that draft the board already put forward with the changes that the city council, Pete Angelini, has, has recommended. And then the conservation agent was asked to weigh in by the council, and the conservation agent's comments are highlighted in yellow. And so those were added. So this is a draft we feel could move forward and get approved.
So what action are you looking for?
We're looking for, forward to petition to the city council.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to submit our proposal as a petition to the city council. All those in favor, roll call, vote.
Patrick Perla, excused, Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi, excuse, Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
John Souza.
Yes.
Tom Carrigan.
Yes.
Jason Parra.
Yes.
Dean Valier, excuse.
Okay, 6.4, Marcelo have 40B ZBA application, request from city attorney to review comments for this application.
Okay, so you've got in front of you, um, the response that we've gone back and forth with, not the ZBA, we've gone back and forth with the, um, the applicant for Rosella Avenue for the 40B project. And they responded to the board's letter from February, um, February 8th, with the letter dated February 18th. And then I am making a recommendation to the board with a letter dated March 3rd, basically responding to their response. So there's a lot of response back and forth here. What I did to make it a little simpler was highlight the items that need the board's attention. The waivers that were requested, and there's a lot of items.
Yeah, they basically want to waiver everything.
So...
Okay, and if they waiver everything, there'd be no control whatsoever.
So the communication's...
When they gave us waivers, they didn't tell us what the waiver was for. So they gave us some of them back, but some were still incomplete. So you can't ask for a waiver, you can't say what the waiver is for.
Yeah, and the ZBA is meeting on this on Wednesday, so whatever the board wants to do, I have to respond tomorrow.
The communication on the agenda says request from city attorney to review comments?
Well, the city attorney provided the, um, the comments dated February 18th to us, from the applicant. So everything on y'all was Elizabeth's response, but she wants to send back to, to the board.
Yes.
And I think we just have those responses back.
All right.
I mean, we always want to direct them into the ZBA, but, you know...
So do you want a motion?
They don't do a lot with zoning, so they don't understand it really. So they're, you know, they're making it there.
Do you want a motion?
They don't have a... So...
I don't think we can do what we're supposed to be saying.
Doing a, a motion to submit it?
Heard Elizabeth just submitted on the county board behalf.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know how many, like, it's like, you know the definition of insanity?
San Elizabeth, I know, I had to write the letter.
I mean...
All right, I move we send the comments one more time.
With the board's backing.
Yes, so ma, motion from Paul, do I have a second? Tom second, all those in favor, by, roll call, vote.
So I'm going to tweak the letter, and I'm going to relay the comments that I had made to be from the board, and it's going to be wordsmithed appropriately.
We trust you, yeah.
Okay, did you already question the...
Yes, we just need the roll call.
Patrick Perla, excused, Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi, excused, Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
John Souza.
Yes.
Tom Carrigan.
Yes.
Jason Parra.
Yes.
Dean Valier, excuse.
All right, 7-0, directors report, 7-1, planning and development directors report from March 21.
Okay, so I have some good news. I received from the Montezuma Regional Planning Commission our updated zoning draft, or zoning book electronically. The one thing, the one little glitch in it, and it's hard to just, see if I can describe this right, is that there was an ordinance that went through, it was during my leave of absence, and it came through, and I never was able to catch it. But there's, the stormwater ordinance that went through is not numbered appropriately. It's, um, our entire zoning ordinance is 22-dash, et cetera. This one is labeled 21-dash, et cetera. So it's out of order. So you're, you'd be going down the zoning book, it's been integrated in by the Montezuma Regional Planning Commission, but it goes 22, 22, 22, 21, and then back to 22. So I don't know if you want to leave it just for the sake of getting the books printed and getting it done, if you want to leave it in there that way. I talked to the clerk's office to see if we're able to renumber it without doing another separate petition, and her first answer was no, but she's going to double check with, um, her, her resources to see if there's a way we can just renumber it. And I followed up with her, and I haven't gotten back an answer from her on that. So she says, she says, she's, she hasn't gotten back, she's, when I checked with her last, it was Friday, she said she hadn't yet heard back from her sources. So, um, I guess I can hold off another meeting on printing them if you want to wait and see what she says.
But I don't think it makes sense to print a document that isn't accurate.
I, now that I know that, that bothers me, so I would want it to be...
Well, you want to fix it.
I want to change.
Do you want to rely on that, then there are going to be legal implications.
The conservation agent submitted it and accidentally inverted, put them on the...
We got it now, we'll fix it, if it takes longer, it takes longer.
So we have to, we might have to petition the city council and do a full petition to change it. But that would be an easy...
That's easy, yeah.
Yeah. Maybe we just do that.
It's still important to get it right, so that's what we have to do.
Okay, so I won't print the book. Do you want me to publish the, um, wait, not publish it a little chronically either, wait?
I wouldn't publish something that's going to change immediately, because people can rely on that, it's wrong.
Okay, so we're going to hold off on publications of all sorts.
Yep.
And, um...
That's good, right?
Until we get a...
Okay.
All right, do you want us to vote on that?
I don't want that, guys, I got to quit.
I don't need your, you can just tell me, I mean, it's consensus.
Told.
Told, okay. 7.1.2, update on ABOA.
Okay, I'm, I was hoping you'd get a response back on this, and I didn't yet, so I don't have my update on that yet.
Okay. We don't have any executive session, we don't have Sal here?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn, all those in favor, roll call, vote.